Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, October 9th, 2024. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers past and present. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to announce that our next scheduled meeting will be Wednesday, November 6th. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter that we have is administrative appeal. The petitioner in the case is attorney Michael McVeigh. The owner of the property is James Lemieux. Subject property is located at 96 Bryant Street, and it's also known as MAP 178 lot 135, and it's located in a single residency district. We previously waived the reading of the abuddhas list.
That's true.
The petitioner is seeking administrative appeal to appeal the decision of the Director of Inspection Services regarding MAP 178 lot 135 due to it not being consistent with two previous positive buildability determinations written by former building commissioners. So, gentlemen, I don't know if you remember this case, but this is one in which the last time that we were before us, I believe it was attorney McVeigh, and it was a situation where we had asked the petitioner actually put together the decision. We, I've received a proposed decision. I don't know if I have any copies to submit, maybe I do not. But at this point in time, I can defer to the petitioner's representative. I think we have attorney Marky here today.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, yes. My understanding is that Mr. McVeigh had had a lengthy discussion on several occasions with this board and had taken some guidance from the board on the best approach because you had concerns not to create a precedent of something that wasn't consistent with past practice. And he prepared a draft decision that I reviewed and filed with the staff, and I think was distributed, addressing why this is a highly unique situation in that two prior building inspectors had issued favorable determinations that this was a family plot that had been divided and everybody had acted in good faith throughout this process, and that there were some stone boundaries that indicated exactly where the property was. As you all know, Mr. McVeigh is, was more knowledgeable about the case than I. He's celebrating his fifth wedding anniversary with his wife in the Caribbean. For the first time, he's away from his two young children, so he had the junior varsity fill-in for him today. So, I am happy to be here, and I'm happy to answer questions you might have about the, about the decision to draft.
All right. Well, I heard everything you said. I agree with most of it except the JV part of it. Actually, I do have the decision. There was a couple changes that I just needed to make, nothing of real significant substance. However, we didn't have any copies for the other members of the board. Our, our staff members are actually taking care of that now, and we should have one of the, we should have it very, very shortly so that our members can follow along as I read it aloud.
Okay, thank you.
I won't close the public hearing on this, just in case there's any other questions we may have. But I think that it addresses all the concerns that we, we had, at least at the last time. Do you remember this case, Attorney Faria?
I certainly do.
Okay, good.
I apologize for not bringing extra copies of the decision.
No, no, not a problem.
Mr. Chair, if I recall, in addition to the previous determinations from the building commissioners, there was also a variance that was granted for this, but they never exercised their variance on that.
I think that that's correct.
I don't think the decision actually references the variance, but we can make that, we can make that, we can add that as an additional finding.
The defining, absolutely. Nothing changed since with that.
No. So, the decision would read as follows. It was the unanimous decision of the Board of Appeals to grant the requested administrative appeal to reverse the decision of Randall Basset, Director of Inspection Services, and to allow 96 Bryant Street to be declared a buildable lot consistent with two previous positive buildability determinations previously made by the Dartmouth Building Commissioner. One, the subject property is located at 96-
Mr. Chair, you want to add the, in addition to the previous determinations, also there was a variance, or you-
Yeah, I might, I might put that later on.
Yeah, what the-
Okay, I was, number one, the subject property is located at 96 Bryant Street and is also known as Assessors MAP 178 lot 135. Subject property is located in a single residency zoning district. The petitioner has owned the subject property since July 23rd, 1996. The subject property is improved within existing stone boundary around this perimeter, including a designed driveway opening as well as an existing shed in the rear of the property. The subject property was zoned general residence when it was created via indoor subdivision plan in 1968. At that time, the subject property exceeded the required 15,000 square feet of lot area and 100-foot affrontage. The subject property was subsequently rezoned to single residence C in 1971, and then to single residence A in 1972. The subject property has twice been declared buildable by, during petitioner's ownership in his zoning review form signed by the Dartmouth Building Commissioner dated March 9th, 1998, and via positive zoning determination letter signed by the Dartmouth Building Commissioner dated June 24, 2002. This is probably where we should add the additional provision. The ZBA has previously-
Granted a variance.
Granted a variance for the construction of a single-family home.
I don't have the date, but-
We're going to put specifically, and we'll put the date. You can write the date in after for us. Specifically, and then blank, all right? And then it says, number eight, the board finds that due to the physical layout and current use of the property, and most significantly, due to the very unique history of the property regarding building department determinations, and for all of the reasons described above, the subject property is buildable for a single-family dwelling. And the usual conditions. Gentlemen, you have any questions?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Gentlemen, no question. Obviously, it's a new, this is a very unique situation. It's a unique form of relief, but I think, given the circumstances, it's, it seems to me to be the, sort of the right thing to do, so to speak. You understand what I'm saying, given the reliance that was placed on the decisions of prior zoning commissioners?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, that's what we-
All right, so at this time, anything else you'd like to add, Attorney Marky?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Mr. Chair, on the case number AAPL-24-1, I move that we adopt the decision of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right.
Appreciate it.
I guess I'll stay on this one.
All right, moving on. Did we change the character of the board? Okay, so, we're just going to take, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess. So, Walter, we'll just change the makeup of the board. Session, moving on to the second matter that's on for the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. It's special permit ZSP 24-16. The petitioner is George Rashad, and the owner is Ark LLC. The subject property is located at 610 State Road, MAP 165 lot 2. It's located in the General Business District. This matter has been advertised on September 19th and September 26th of this year.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abuddhas.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a special permit to expand the pre-existing non-conforming structure by adding a second floor, seeking relief on the Article 6, Section 375-6.2C2, non-conforming structures. Let's see if we got a denial letter here from the building inspector. We've got a letter dated August 26th of 2024. It's addressed to George Rashad, and it's regarding 610 State Road. And it says, "I've reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Applicants seeking to expand the pre-existing non-conforming structure by adding a second floor. Per 375-6.2C2, a special permit is required. Your application is being denied on the following sections of Dartmouth zoning bylaw, which is 375, 6.2, 6.2C2. When the expansion or alteration of such a structure cannot conform with the development standards for structure in the zoning district in which the structure is located, the structure may be extended or altered only by special permit granted by the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals shall not issue a special permit unless the board finds that the extension is not, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. The subject property is located in the General Business Aquifer Zone 3 district." And this letter is from the zoning enforcement officer for the town of Dartmouth. I've got other comments from the board. I have from site plan review, from the planning board. They're indicating that site plan review required after ZBA appearance. And the Board of Health says, "No water quality comments will be provided for this application since the work shown on the plan is an overlay on existing area. Therefore, the proposal will not add burden to the watershed and the DPW. Their usual requirements, which are compliance with DPW regulations, rules, and specifications will be required." All right, so, there being no other comments from town boards, at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner to state their case.
Hello, my name is George Abirashad.
Hi, how are you?
Good, yeah.
We've seen you before.
Yeah, we've seen, it's been two years. I was here two years ago. We got the various, and the special permit for an addition, and we reached a dead end with the DPW. After like our meeting with them, they proposed to go one floor up, and we're not adding any footprints, not changing anything. The only thing we're adding is the dumpster pad, which is the site plan, they required that. And we're doing as well the dry well chosen over there that give us like as well for the recharge.
So, if I'm to understand, you're actually not going to be using the variance that we granted you before?
No.
Because you're going to stay in the same footprint of the existing building and just go up?
Yes.
Okay. It's a long way to get here.
It is.
All right. So, does anyone have any questions on the petition? I don't know if you remember this one, Alvin. I don't know if you decided this one.
I, I think I did. I think I was on one.
Obviously, it's a new petition, but they come before us for a special permit and a variance, both of which we granted. It was a different plan. Obviously, this one has less of an impact on the aquifer than the other one, for one. So, there are actually a lot more improvements. There, he's actually asking for less relief, in my opinion, than he was asking for before.
No, I agree. I agree. I just have a quick question. What have you done with the previous two decisions? Anything?
Nothing.
You haven't recorded them, Mr. Register?
Oh, we recorded them.
You recorded them?
Yeah. Well, almost at the end, but we're hitting a wall.
But if he doesn't act on them, then they expire within a year.
Plus, on the decision, you can say supersede this.
We could do that, yeah, we could do that too.
Okay.
All right, so this is a public meeting, and people have an opportunity to speak either in favor or against. So, I have to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and either speak in support or in opposition to this request. You can come forward at this point in time. For our viewers at home, no one has come forward to either speak in favor or against. So, at this point in time, I usually leave the public hearing open. I didn't give the other members an opportunity. Is there any questions that you'd like to ask the petitioner?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Doctor? Okay, so, at this time, we've got some proposed findings. The subject property is located at 610 State Road, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and is in a general business and aquifer protection overlay district, zone 3. The property consists of a lot with 4,952 square feet, improved by a non-conforming commercial single-story building measuring. I can put the measurement here. Is that 20, I can't read it. I'd have to get my, hold on a second.
26 by-
By 40? When I wrote this, I didn't have my glasses. 26 by 40. 26 by 40 feet. Does that sound correct, Mr. Rashad? This lot is a non-conforming pre-existing corner lot with frontage on State Road, Route 6, and Hillcrest Street. The petitioner seeks a special permit to expand the pre-existing non-conforming structure by adding a second floor, and the petitioner seeks relief from Article 6, Section 375-6.2C2, expansion of pre-existing structures by special permit. And you wanted to add an additional provision in there, right? Or is that going to be a condition? Or do you want to handle that?
I mean-
I have no prob-
If they don't exercise-
If they don't, unless they want to, I don't want to take away the right if he changes his mind once again and he wants to go back to it. It'll lapse by operational law after a year anyway.
Yes.
Are you okay with leaving it the way it is?
Yeah, it's fine.
Yes, okay.
This way, he has his option.
And he's got the usual conditions as part of this. Anybody have any questions with what's been proposed? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing for-
Second the motion.
All right, and it was going to be for 24-16, right? All right.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I make a motion that we approve special permit ZSP 24-16 with the findings and conditions as stated.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
This time is the charm, right?
All right, yeah, hopefully.
All right, good luck. Here you go. All right, moving on to special permit ZSP 24-17. The petitioner, applicant Zenith Land Surveyors LLC, the owner is Craig Snell. The subject property is located at 1 Sharon Avenue, MAP 156 lot 39. The property is located in the General Business District, and it was advertised on September 19th to September 26th.
Make a motion that we waive the reading of the abuddhas.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The petitioner is seeking a special permit to install an in-ground pool, increasing lot coverage from 29.9% to 37.8%, seeking relief on the Article 28, Section 375-28.6A1, special permit uses. So, let's move on to this one here. Let's see what we've got for a denial. There's a denial letter from the Dartmouth Building Inspector. It's addressed to John Romanelli, and it's dated August 26th. "I've reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant seeks to install in-ground pool at 1 Sharon Avenue, increasing lot coverage from 29.9% to 37.8%. Per 375-28.6, a special permit is required to increase lot coverage." So, they're seeking relief on the 375, which is a common request that comes before us if you're in the aquifer zoning district. And this property is located, obviously, within the aquifer zone 3 district, to be specific. All right, let's see what other comments we have. We have a comment from the Health Department. It says, "The home is connected to sewer," so it doesn't appear that they have any concerns. And we get the typical and usual DPW, compliance with DPW regulations. The specification was required, but not limited to the following. Now, they do add a couple things here at the bottom, specifically to this project. Because it's within the aquifer protection overlay district, they're recommending showing a breakdown of existing and proposed impervious on the site plan, i.e. house roof, shed roof, driveway patio, et cetera. Recommend roof lead a recharge for any existing structures to offset the additional impervious from 29.2 to 37.8. So, that's something I'll defer to your, you and also the petitioner. I think we have Mr. Romanelli here can also address some of that. So, at this point in time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner and their representative to say things.
Good evening, John Romanelli, Zenith Land Surveyors in New Bedford, representing Craig Snell, the homeowner here at number 1 Sharon Avenue. Looking for a net increase of basically 8% over the allowed use for an in-ground swimming pool. I was aware of the comments from DPW. We were going to entertain that trader-type system if this was approved by the ZBA. Other than that, I think we've covered on the, on the plan here.
Excuse me.
The law was created in 1973, just under 20,000 square feet, obviously an undersized lot. It's time, and looking again for the net increase of 8%.
So, what you're saying is, the concerns from the DPW that they have that you break down has not been put onto this plan?
Correct. Yeah, test bit, and it has to be witnessed now by the town. DPW would have to be scheduled.
Well, I don't know how the board feels about that, but-
I'm not sure. I think we've-
We've handled it where we require them to come back.
And so, and also we-
We've also done it where they're going to file an updated plan.
If the percentage is going to change, that's the only thing, you know? If you don't have, and I suggest they reach out to Paul Dewar because, you know, when you do your breakdown, so make sure you have every concrete square and patio on the plan, so.
So, what I've noticed is that he does indicate it's a 14 by 38 pool, but I don't know if there's calculations for the apron as well.
I'm not sure.
Yes, it does include the apron.
It doesn't, so the calc, the percentage calculation also includes the apron?
Yes, it does.
So, you do understand the risk that you run here is that if we grant the relief and then something changes, that you don't have that percentage even off by a tenth, then we've got an issue. Either you're going to change it to comply, or you're going to come back to us. So, I leave it up to you to decide whether or not you'd like to actually amend the plan and then come back to us and confirm that the numbers are good, or we'll approve this one and-
Not to exceed-
Not to exceed whatever the 38-point-something percent.
Well, I haven't, I haven't sat on a board where you didn't do that. Every time I've sat on one of these where we had to deal with percentage of coverage, it was always on the plan.
All right.
I haven't sat on one that wasn't on the plan.
Maybe you didn't, but I do have a recollection, at least one, one, on one occasion, that we did give the person opportunity to do it later. But if you'd rather we do that, that's fine. We can have Mr. Romanelli, if you feel more comfortable, we can-
Let me ask a quick question. So, you're looking for a breakdown of house, walkway, driveway?
All impervious, existing and proposed.
Okay, the total is on here, but not the breakdown of each individual impervious area?
Well, the total impervious, yeah, I mean, from previous experience, we've had-
Oh, all right.
It does have, here, it does have a notation.
No, I know, I see.
It says, "Existing lot coverage impervious area 5942, proposed lot coverage 750, 7502," which is the actual percentage. As long as he's stuck to that, it doesn't really matter, quite frankly.
Oh, no, okay.
Let me see, uh, let me see.
This notation. Excuse me? Yeah, you want to see this one? Alvin?
Okay.
There's another one you missed here.
Oh, I, I, oh, yeah, yeah.
You've got the actual, it's always nice when we have the larger version.
Okay, now I-
It's like a portal now, we print it out, and obviously, we don't have plan sizes until we get here.
Understood.
9378, okay.
I understand your concern. I feel okay with it.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
All right, I, I don't have, I don't really have a problem. Now, his numbers are on there.
This is what he's locked to, right? Whether or not he makes an L shape or a perfect rectangle, it's what he's locked to for the percentage coverage.
And you get 10% credit for increase, for recharge-
Infiltrator.
The infiltration, so.
And you know, you're not going to get a permit until all that stuff's done and you satisfy those requirements. So, we always put as a condition that they got to get approval from all town boards.
Be fine with us.
All right, so-
With the recharge, I think he won't be over the 29% probably, I don't know.
It could happen. Well, it's, it's not, it's 10. Oh, you're saying he was going to get a credit back?
Maxed at 10% of the area of the lot was the, was the area of the lot. Yeah, okay, no, I think he'll be close, probably, yeah, but.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I'm fine with the plan.
All right.
Just one question for you.
Sure, Doc.
Just, what's the purpose of making such a big pool if, if you would like to disclose to us? Because somebody may jump into it and get drowned. It's a health issue, potential health issue. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the doctor, but-
I was going to ask if you could repeat the question.
Doctor, could you just speak a little louder?
Sure, yeah, I'll get closer. The pool is very large. If somebody jumps into it and then gets drowned, does it cause any liability for any of us? Is it right to do or wrong to do? Thank you.
All right, Doctor. If you look at the plan itself, they had, they're required to put a fence and a gate, and it has to be an approved gate, type gate, so a child can't, can't actually, it's at a certain height so that you're dealing with a child of a certain age typically that would be able to access the pool. Beyond that, that's usually with the building inspector. That's what he's going to do. And he won't give a final CO for that unless that's approved and done in accordance with mass law. They're pretty strict on that, to be honest.
Yeah, it's not our jurisdiction.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you, that's all that I had.
So, Mr. Romanelli, as you all know, these are public hearings, so I have to give anyone in the audience an opportunity to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? There not appearing to be anyone. Let me, I think I have some proposed findings. Here you go, gentlemen. I usually leave the public hearing open so that if there's any amendments or changes we need to make, we can take your input. The subject property is located at 1 Sharon Avenue, Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and is also known as Assessors MAP 156 lot 39. The property has been owned by Craig Snell since October 19, 2016, and is located in the single-residence be, aquifer zone 3 district. The petitioner seeks a special permit to construct a 14 by 38-foot in-ground pool and pool apron in the side yard of the existing property. Petitioner seeks relief under Article 28, Section 375-28.6A1, special permit uses to increase lot coverage, which is presently 29.9% to 37.8%. The board finds that after review of the submitted plans, that the nature of the proposed 14 by 32-foot in-ground pool and pool apron is proposed in such a manner that it will be appropriate to the natural topography, soils, and other characteristics of the proposed site. And the board finds that the installation of the 14 by 38-foot in-ground pool and pool apron will not be detrimental to the neighborhood and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw. And obviously, they're going to secure all necessary permits and approvals from all town boards and agencies, including the DPW, and I'm sure you'll, you'll provide them that information.
We will.
Any questions at this point, gentlemen?
No.
I have none.
All right, gentlemen?
Not at all, thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
Up to me. I make a motion that we approve case number ZSP 24-17, the special permit for 1 Sharon Avenue with the proposed findings and conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Great, thank you very much.
Good luck. Good luck. All right, next is- To use variance. The petitioner in this case is Ryan Cabral. The owner is Kristen Fernandez. The subject property is located at 719 Dartmouth Street, MAP 128 lot 127. The property is located in the Bliss Corner Mixed Use District, and this matter was legally advertised on September 19th and September 26th and October 3rd of 2024.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abuddhas.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a special permit. It says special permit, seeking a use variance, excuse me. It's not a special permit. Seeking a use variance to build- a use variance, excuse me, it's not a special permit, seeking a use variance to build a detached garage to house an ambulance, and is seeking relief on the Article 17, Section 375-17.2 Allowed Uses Ambulatory, Ambulatory Services. So at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner, or actually, no, I've got some things to read into the record here before we do that. I think that's part of this packet, right? Actually, I got to clear this up a little bit, there's a lot of stuff here. There you go. And this as well, you can recycle. Good. So the denial letter from the building inspector is dated September 3rd, and it's addressed to a Ryan Cabral, and it's regarding 719 Dartmouth Street, and it indicates that "I've reviewed your application, and at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to noncompliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant seeking to build a detached garage to house an ambulance for the town. Per 375-17.2 Allowed Uses Ambulatory Services is not an allowed use in this district and will require use variance. Your application is being denied under the following sections of Dartmouth zoning bylaw 375-43.3 Use Variances." Says amended 6-3, and it says, "Except as expressly prohibited in this bylaw, variances may be granted for uses of land not allowed by right, provided that in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, and amendments or supplements thereto, the Board of Appeals determines that such land or structure cannot reasonably be used as allowed by the zoning bylaw, except that the Board of Appeals shall not grant variances for uses of land in single residence A, B, and C zoning districts. The subject property is located in the Bliss Corner Mixed Use District." All right, so we've read that into the record. Let's see what we've got here for other town comments. We've only got something from DPW. It says, "I did not see a site plan uploaded showing the proposed location of the building and existing utilities or proposed connections to utilities." But I have one.
What happened once he had put it under the bodies?
Okay.
So we ended up...
All right. And they've got their other usual compliance with the DPW regulations and rules. All right, so it appears that that stuff has been submitted since... All right, so at this time, I'm going to call upon the petitioner or their representative to come forward and state your case.
Mr. Chairman, if my brother's the JV team, I'm the freshman team, I guess. I, I'm here on behalf of the property owner and Stat Ambulance. Just to give a little background on this is, Stat Ambulance has been providing ambulance services to Fire District 1 for 41 of the last 42 years. They have been housed for decades at Fire District 1 on Bridge Street. At that location, they have been able to house their ambulance and as well, their staff, who would be quartered there as well. In the past year, the district, Fire District 1, had petitioned or began to talk about a rehabilitation of the station. As a result of getting different grants from different agencies and different levels of government, they were able to secure that, and now their rehabilitation is going to What has happened as a result of this, these particular grants is there's limitations on who they can house there. And for the last decade, many decades, Stat has leased that for a amount of money each month and provided services and training to their staff, to the staff at Fire District 1. They can no longer do that. So they have been seeking for the last year, different locations within District 1 for purposes of providing emergency care through their ambulance service. They had begun the process with a purchase and sale on Arnold Street, which is between Russell's Mills Road and Dartmouth Street. About a quarter of a mile down or half mile down on the left, there was an old garage that was there. It wasn't going to be suitable, and in addition, they saw that it was going to be in a residential area and didn't think it would work. As a result, this property came up at 719 Dartmouth Street. It's on the corner of Atlantic and Dartmouth. It has, across the street from it, a marine storage area, and then on the other side of that lot is the Pick 'n Pay for Convenience Store. That's to the south side of it. On the north side of it is a, is a residential home, which has an empty lot towards Dartmouth Street on Tremont, but their, their house is on Tremont. After that, it's Cape Cod Furniture. After that, it is Costello Real Estate and Insurance, and after that, it is Kids Inc. Kids Inc. has a front to it, and it also has a panelized corrugated steel building in the back, similar to, much larger than what was being proposed here, but similar to that. In addition to that, directly across the street is what we've traditionally called the Big Value Outlet Plaza. There are 14 stores essentially within 200, 300 yards of this particular property, and there are two residents that are abutting directly the property. What we are proposing is this, this particular location is approximately 1/5 of an acre. The building itself would be 24 feet by 30 feet. It would be 20, 21 feet high. There would be a garage door that is 12 by 14, and it would be placed in the back, I would say, the southwest corner of the lot. It's 26.5 feet from its closest neighbor from the west. It would be a 10-foot and a half, 10 and a half-foot setback from Atlantic Street. The door would be located for the entrance, or the exit and entrance of the garage would be located on Atlantic Street, and there would have to be a cutout, curb cutout, et cetera, for that with the DPW. The business itself is an ambulance service that contracts with Fire District 1. They, they work 24/7. They have two staff on at a time, and they need a court, they need quarters, and they need a place to house the, the ambulance. So what's happened is, is they believe that they can use the house for the quarters, and this garage that we are proposing, that is just purposes, fits all the other requirements of the zoning bylaws, except for the use. Just so the, the board is familiar, they get about, somewhere around 1,300 calls a year. So that's about three, that's between three and four calls per day. Many of those calls, the vast, vast majority of those calls occur during the daytime. It is the experience of the Stat officials that it's somewhere between, a busy night would be two or three calls, and that would be an extremely busy night. There's one call per night, something to that effect, is what they're looking at. But essentially, it is a, an ambulance service which would be used in a very central location to Fire District 1, along a main artery, Dartmouth Street, and it seems to make sense in all respects for business-wise to do this. Also, the building itself complies with all the bylaws within that mixed-use district. The question again, I guess, is, what about the use? When you talk about the use which we're here for, we look at, are there other circumstances of similar in nature within this zoning area that allows for that? And I would suggest to you, although there are 22 different uses that are described in the Bliss Corner Mixed Use, number 13 allows for fire districts to have emergency services located and exempt from, or allows that particular use within this district. The only difference is, for that to exist, the town or the fire district must own and operate the facility. So the only difference is the ownership of the property. It's, it's an allowed use by any fire district within this, this zoning area. So it's not like they're asking for something that is unusual or not expected, considering what the zoning bylaws say. So if you were to look at, again, subsection, I think it's 17.2, subsection 13 describes that in detail as how the fire...
Do you have a copy of that?
I do.
I do, too.
I know, you told me you would have it. I left my book back at the office.
May I ask a question while you're looking for that?
Yes.
What is your contract with the fire district? You, you have an obligation to comply, to follow a contract and perform ambulance services for the fire district. Is that the contract?
Yes.
Then I think it's used and operated.
It's with the, it's with the town.
I think you fit the definition of section 13.
Is that the only one you have?
Yeah.
Well, I'll just, I'll read it, I'll give it back to you. Fire district uses any building, structure, facility, or use owned and operated by a Dartmouth Fire District and with the express purpose to promote public safety. So the catch to this is the fact that it's going to be done by the municipality, or the district. Actually, it says the district, because we have three districts in our town.
I bet it's all the same department now.
Is that what you wanted to point out to me?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further argument you want to make with that, or?
No, I think, I think that sums it up, is that it's, it's, it's not like we're asking for something that's beyond, other than the ownership issue.
Right here.
And because of the restrictions with either bonding or granting?
Actually, I might have notes on that, but if someone else wants to look at it, I'm... No, I, I might need it for...
No, no, we'll give it back. I just wanted to see if they wanted to take a look at it. Here you go. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you can continue on.
No, no interruption. So I guess my point is, is that it's not a use that would, or it is a use that's absolutely consistent with the bylaws.
Except the fact that it's owned by a private individual or party.
Correct.
Versus, let's call it the municipality.
But the use which we're here for is absolutely consistent with that.
That's not how I had looked at this initially. You certainly brought that to my attention.
Back, back to my original question. Your contract, or the ambulance service's contract, requires them to go out when there's a service call.
Correct.
They can't say it, "I'm not going to do it."
Correct.
So they're essentially part of the district, but they're not officially, legally, part of the district.
Correct.
And it's the only ambulance service in the district.
Correct.
All right. You're making this argument.
That's what I'm here for.
He's always been a mentor to me. You laugh, but there's truth to that. You don't, you don't know that, but it is true.
All right.
It shows your age now, too.
No, does it ever.
Attorney Marky, as you all know, this is a public meeting. So at this time, I'm going to call upon, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? You need to identify, you need to come up to the podium, state your name nice and loud and your address, and then explain to us what your concerns are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Manuel Borges.
Manuel Borges, you said?
Manuel Borges, or Manuel Borges.
Yep.
And the reason I'm here, it's about this thing for the...
But if you, before you do that, where do you live, Mr. Borges? Where do you live?
Right next to this property.
Okay.
My property is right against this property.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay?
Yeah.
Which is the 2 Tremont Street.
Excuse me?
Number 2 Tremont Street.
Oh, number 2 Tremont. Okay, so your house faces towards Tremont Street?
Faces Tremont, and my property faces Dartmouth Street on the south side, and the west side faces 719, not Dartmouth Street.
Okay.
So my house is between Tremont and Atlantic Street.
What is it on Atlantic, what'd you say?
Between...
My property is between two streets.
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't go into the other street, but...
Yeah, it's, it has frontage on Tremont and frontage on Dartmouth Street.
Two residential properties there.
Okay.
719 Dartmouth Street and 2 Tremont.
Okay.
And what I understand from this letter is, the town sending this to come to the meeting, too. So the town opposes this. It's against the town, this law, to build a garage on this property.
Can I see that letter, please?
Sure.
I believe it's what it is, but I just want to make sure. Just want to make sure.
What I understand...
Let me just take a look. Okay, I know what this is. You can go back to the podium and I'll explain this to you. You're going to, you're going to go, we're going to record this, that's the thing. All right. Is there something else you'd like to say, Mr. Borges?
I'm sorry.
Is there something else you'd like to add?
So the information that I have, ambulance should be running from the fire station, which is District 1, which is pretty close to our area. So I have, so ambulance parked on the private property, I mean, so...
Okay.
So I don't think this is a law at all, I don't know what the town comes to do with this.
About that letter, that letter is notifying you, the town doesn't have a position one way or the other specifically. That's a letter notifying you that they are asking this board for permission to be able to put a building there to be used. They can build this garage as a matter of right. The garage is compliant with the zoning bylaws. The thing is, is they want to use the garage for, to house an ambulance. That's what they're asking permission, because the district that you reside in, which is mixed use, no, Bliss Corner Mixed Use District, doesn't specifically allow for this type of use in this area. So they're asking for a variation from the bylaw that's in existence to be able to perform and conduct their operation there. And I agree with you that it should be at the fire station. But the problem is, Mr. Borges, I don't know if you heard them before, and I'm learning about this for the first time, just like you...
I don't know anything about this.
So what's happening is, they're making, the, the fire department actually came before us to ask for a variance so they could put in addition to the fire station. They're making improvements to the fire station. The fire station is going to start looking different soon. However, they received money, from what I understand, they're receiving money from different government agencies and grant money, but that money has certain restrictions that are attached to it. And one of them is, you can't have an outside agency operating in a building that's being funded by this grant money. So they can no longer be there. That's what they're explaining to us. And at this point, I have to believe it, because that's what's being presented to me. So I understand your concern, and that was the first thing that came to mind when I looked at this, right? When I looked at this, I said, "Why is it not at the fire station?" And their attorney is explaining to us that it can no longer be at the fire station. So therefore, they now have to put it at another location. And obviously, it can't just be anywhere, it has to be strategically placed somewhere within District 1, and I don't know exactly how big District 1 is, but it has to be strategically placed at a location that will serve the citizens and the residents of District 1. And this is the location that they picked out. Now, having explained all that, all right, and I understand your concern next door, based on the letter you received, I think I've provided you some clarification for that. What other concerns do you have about the fact that this would be operating close to your property?
Commotion, environment, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, Dartmouth is right there, down the street is a nursing home, which is Brandon Woods, so the ambulance is always adding to a traffic coming from the Big Value Plaza, which has been crazy there, that the last time I received a, that's the first time I come for a meeting here.
I understand.
Okay. I believe the town defends the citizens. I believe that.
We, this board...
But on that case, only Big Value, they don't defend it. But, on that case, only Big Value, they didn't defend it, I ignore that. And America, that was already, the town was already set up for that, so what is my word good for, okay? So, I'm concerned about this now, because same, same thing's going to happen here, I believe. Okay?
I think you would, I think you would agree. Mr. Borges, I think you would agree that we need an ambulance to serve the members of our community. Especially, as we get older, we're more prone to situations in which we may need an ambulance.
Right, right, right.
We can't just have a family member bring us to the hospital. So, we do need ambulance service. Now, the question becomes.
I do, I'm not going to guess that.
Okay, so, we all agree on that. However, whether or not this is the best place for it, that's certainly something that this board will consider. That's something that this board will consider. Now, when I look at this, I notice that the garage is probably the furthest away that it could be on this property from your home. So obviously, they've made some attempt to keep it away from a butters.
Where the garage, can be location of the garage?
Excuse me?
On this property.
You don't know where it's going to be? All right. What we can do is, we can, if you want to come up, we can show this to you. Would you like to come up, Mr. Borges? All right, so, this would be your home, somewhere in here. This is, this is Dartmouth Street, this is Atlantic Street, okay? So as if you were looking, if you were standing in the parking lot for Big Value Outlet, looking this way, this is the front of the house that exists. The garage is going to be here, see the shaded area here? This is the garage, and the garage doors are not going to face towards Dartmouth Street, they're going to face towards Atlantic Street.
Atlantic Street.
That's right, they're going to face towards Atlantic Street.
Yeah, I know, where is this house? I'm trying to figure out where is this?
He's over here.
It's on three month.
Yes, yes, this is side of my house, yeah.
So, it's going to be on this side, it's on the opposite.
I understand, Atlantic Street.
Yes, it's going to be on Atlantic Street, it's going to be on Atlantic Street, okay.
Even though it's very, like I said, the environment, the motion, the ambulance is always adding up, okay?
Well, but I also, I understand that.
You understand my point?
Yep, I just need you to be, if you can be there so we can record the voices.
I know that.
Okay. So, I must say this, I always think that the people that make these decisions, I like to think, that they, when they make these decisions, they try to find the strategic points to ensure that they're maximizing response times. This is a sensitive situation, we're not just talking, you know, just a garage for a landscaper here, we're talking about something that's going to be for public services. Although, it's going to be owned by someone privately, they have a contract with the town, and they indicated, it's been over forty, I think he said forty-one or forty-two years, that this person has provided this service for the town of Dartmouth. And I probably would like to think that they picked Dartmouth Street specifically because it's a main thoroughfare in our town. It's a, it's a very main road that they can get in and out of pretty quickly. Obviously, they, I don't think they'd like to put this on Smith Neck Road, because when you look at where the population is for District One, probably the greater concentration of it is not far from where this is, from where they're proposing this. I don't know that for a fact, but I probably think that that may be accurate.
Well, compared to, I mean, this property, if it's going to be there, it's going to be much bigger distance to go to Smith Neck Road from there.
Absolutely.
Okay? And there was another petition, I understand, first one for, for Tucker Road, and I changed it over to this one.
Tucker Road's a different district. Tucker Road may be District Three, it may be District Two.
Same people requesting to have that.
They wouldn't respond, they would have a different company respond to that area.
Okay.
So, are there any other concerns, aside from the fact, is there issues about, anything else that you're concerned about, aside from the fact that there's going to be a garage there, and it's going to house an ambulance, and there's going to be a business conducted there where it will house two people who will serve to drive and the ambulance and attend the ambulance?
This is already the site?
No, it's not the site. It's actually not the site.
Okay.
It's not the, that's why we have a public meeting. I was wondering if there'd be more people, aside from you, any neighbors, other neighbors, who may have concerns.
As a matter of fact, the area, the Atlantic Street, is already a deposit there for construction place that houses stuff from business, that they bring their stuff there, and fishing boats. There's a very commotion there, a certain time in the morning, like four, five o'clock in the morning, they're dumping stuff and enter dumpsters and stuff, so you added more of that, so who's it going, who's it going to put up with that? Who's it going to put up with that?
Well, the thing is, is this, all I can tell you is that, whatever they're doing there, I'm sure it's compliant with whatever the zoning is, I'd like to think it's compliant. If it's not, you always have the ability to call the building inspector, he's the zoning enforcement officer, you can take care of it.
So, there's a lot of commotion on every way there. I'm saying.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to put that in the books or not, but there's a lot of commotion there.
All right.
Okay, there's a lot of commotion with the plaza, that construction place there, and you add another garage for, for ambulance there, who's going to live there, in peace? I'm saying, I'm seventy-three years old, okay? I need peace. I work all my life, and I'm still working.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Borges.
And I'm a good citizen of this town. You can check my records and everything.
Well, we are too, and that's why we're here. We don't get paid to do this, we do this because we like our town too.
I hope the town comes up with a good conclusion.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this request? Doesn't appear to be anyone else. All right, so, do we have any other questions of this petitioner?
I don't have any, no.
All right, so, what I can say is this.
I, I just.
Anyone else have any comments?
Yes, the same issue, from medical point of view, is very difficult, because the ambulance is very close to residents, that they need to go back and forth, and the street may not be adequate, may not be large enough to accommodate that ambulance transportation.
Well, have you driven by the location, doctor? I've driven by there, I was there this afternoon. As a matter of fact, one of the things that I noticed here is, they have, they have a fence that's there, and it appears based on this plan, that that fence is actually not on the property line. They actually have much more land than where the fence is actually located. So, this land looks bigger than what it, what it may be, there may be more ownership than what they're actually utilizing, based on the limitation of fences. Not that it has a lot to do with this, but certainly, I think that they have a significant portion, there may be another ten or fifteen feet of land that they're not utilizing on this lot. But, beyond that, I have some concerns about the aesthetics of the building itself. That's me personally, but that's not necessarily directly within our purview. I haven't heard anything about, you know, the, the requirements of forty-eight, section ten, chapter forty, section ten. But, I know this, that, obviously, this has to be placed somewhere in this district. Whether or not this is the best place for it, it's not for us to decide, it's whether or not we feel that they meet the requirements of, of a variance for this particular location. And I'm only one person here, I, you know, I've got members here, and I don't know how they feel about it. I personally don't think it's bad just on its face, I don't think it's a bad idea, I just, I just find it to be somewhat of a commercial-type building, but when you look at what's in the area, and their counsel's explained, he's explained, not only what's across the street, and quite frankly, he's described it, and I think he kindly did so, as some marine depot center there, where people are just putting things, and I think Mr. Borges had some comments that he doesn't like what goes on there either. But obviously, that's probably a pre-existing non-conforming use, it's probably been going on probably before I was born. But, what can you tell me about the, the structure itself?
So, just in relation to the structure, it is, the same structure in a larger capacity is located just two blocks away at Kids Inc. There's like a gymnasium there, that, that is much larger. This is, again, it's, the height is twenty-one feet, it's, it's not, it's not like a two-level garage where it will be high above all the other houses. It's consistent with the neighbor on Atlantic Street, which I think it's, would be higher, their house would be higher than what this roof is. It is a steel building, wooden-beamed steel building, that will, again, have just one, one entrance in the back or the side for purposes of having the pedestrian traffic, and then one in the front, which is a garage door, which is twelve by fourteen, which will allow the ambulance to enter and exit. I would just say this, that for forty-one years, that they have dealt with neighbors in the south end of Dartmouth, on Bridge Street, on Cleveland Street, on Pleasant Street. Those are neighbors who hear, one, the horn that goes off, whenever the ambulance or the fire department takes off, they have traditionally, I mean, so they are very cautious and conscientious as a ambulance service as to making sure that the neighbors are not disrupted to a degree. That would be a real problem. They want to be friendly neighbors in relation to that.
All this planned here?
I just wanted to make sure you got the larger version of this, because I, I got the small version, but it's always nice to see in a larger scale.
I just have a question for Attorney Marky. So, if you don't mind, if, can you explain how they, the, the operation of the business? I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking like, it's, they dispatch, they, they got a call, right? And then they have to get out, right? I looked at the, I mean, I know the area, I'm, I really don't have too much concerns about the, the view of the building or the appearance, you know, so. I think he probably has more concerns about noise, or, you know, especially at night. So when you leave, you need to back out, out of the garage into Atlantic, Atlantic Street, basically?
So, no, you would, you would back into the garage?
Back in, back in, yeah.
So, you, they would back into the garage?
Oh, they would back into the garage, okay.
And then they would leave going forward.
Okay, and would they have their siren, or?
No, so, one of the things, how it, how it would operate is, the call comes in, in fact, I believe STAT runs the nine-one-one service, or has a dispatch in Dartmouth. They would then dispatch someone, they would leave the home, go grab, go into the garage, start up the car, start up the ambulance, and then the ambulance would pull out. The lights would probably go on, and definitely go on before they hit Dartmouth Street. And that's the, the common direction, if you were to look at that area of Dartmouth, Dartmouth Street will be the street in which probably ninety-eight percent of their dispatches will go, because they, they can easily get onto Russell's Mills and go out that way from, whether it be Potter, Potter Street or Rogers Street area, or they would just go down to Rockland Street and head out towards Russell's Mills Road, if they had to go towards the area of the old police station. That would be a quicker route. The only area that they would respond going westbound on Atlantic is something that's in that, kind of, that southern, or the most eastern area of Russell's Mills Road and Smith Street, I think it is in that area. That could be the only time that they go there. So I would say that ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the time it leaves, it's going to go right onto Dartmouth Street, which again, as Mr. Borges said, the ambulance is going back and forth all the time, going to the, nowadays, people our age, they're going to pickleball, I'm sure, or they're going to the, the nursing home down just north of the old Sunrise Bakery, so.
So whether this place is there or not, you still have, we can say that we can have ambulances going on Dartmouth Street, back and forth, there.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
So you're basically saying that they have to use Atlantic Street, then Dartmouth Street?
No, no, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm just saying, how, I mean, just to address Mrs. Borges, I mean, whether they're there or not, there are going to be ambulances going on Dartmouth Street all the time, you know?
Yeah, it, it, that is a main corridor, even to St. Luke's, so it's not unusual for cars, for ambulances to go down.
Excuse me, Mr. Borges, you can't speak, you can't speak right now, you'll have an opportunity to come up.
But, as far, as far as the, the, the only thing that will really, is again, understanding that the evening is probably the time between, you know, say eleven o'clock to six in the morning, when an ambulance leaves, they're not going to spark up the, the siren and bolt out of there like it's emergency fifty-one when I was a kid, it's not going to be that way. They'll come out, they'll turn the lights on, when they get to Dartmouth Street, if necessary, they would turn the siren on, but, you know, if it's late at night on Dartmouth Street, there's not a lot of traffic, they'll have the lights on and then they'll go. So, I, I don't suspect, there obviously will be an interruption, there's no doubt about that, but is it an interruption that is that detrimental? And I would suggest that it's not, in light of the precautions that they've used all the time for the last forty-one years on Bridge Street.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Borges, I just say, giving up, you've got to come up to the, you've got to come up to the podium, only if you've got something new to add, come on forward.
Thank you. Now, my second question is, I just heard, I read in a paper, in a Dartmouth paper this week, that the District One station is going to expand. Why don't they have a garage there for the ambulance? If they can expand the, the station, the building?
Can I just?
That's my question.
I'm going to, I'll answer that.
Sure.
If my client could do that, it would save them a mini fortune. We would obviously want that, that's the ideal situation, but it's not going to happen because of these, these requirements. But it was absolutely the hope that they would be able to continue to stay within the, the confines of District One on Bridge Street. It, it's not going to happen, the landlord says it's not going to happen, so they are going to be removed from that. We're in the process now of trying to find temporary location for them while this rehabilitation's going on, and we're working with the town to do that on a temporary basis.
Thank you. You heard what he said?
Okay, yeah. You know, like I said, they're going to expand, right? They're going to put more tax on top of us.
That's a different issue, I don't want to hear that.
I'm telling, but that's.
I pay a lot of money in taxes, too.
That's part of the issue.
All right.
That's part of the issue. Okay, and they're putting the whole thing on top of us, I mean, in that situation, to me.
I understand. All right, thank you, Mr. Borges.
I kind of feel, you know what I'm saying, I don't want to say the word, but, you know what I'm saying?
I understand, Mr. Borges. Gentlemen, is there any other questions that we have for the petitioner?
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
I have none. What is your sense on this? Because I'll, I'll be upfront, I don't have anything prepared.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions, I'd like to.
I apologize, Attorney Fariah, I didn't even look that way.
I, I, I just want to, is seven nineteen Dartmouth Street, is the petitioner, did they purchase that property, or about to purchase that property?
I don't know, I probably, probably it's contingent on them getting this type of approval, but I'll, I'll let the petitioner.
Exactly, it's a, there's a, there's a purchase and sale with a contingency of this.
Okay, a couple of other questions I had, though, is, is my understanding is that STAT Ambulance, do they bid on a contract? So is it a possibility that we could be approving this, and that a couple of years down the road, that somebody else bids on a contract and has another location? And now is the order to the contract from the district?
I think that's a very good question. Obviously, if they abandon it for two years, then basically, it's a lost use, right?
But, what I'm trying to understand is, what, what is the status of, the contract, is it a three-year contract, or?
I believe it's a five-year contract, maybe wrong, and that might be three years, but there is a contract, obviously, they have to fulfill the requirements of their existing contract, and they're willing to invest to purchase a home, to build a garage. They have been doing this particular contract for forty-one out of the forty-two years. I believe the only year that they didn't do it was maybe nineteen eighty-four. So they have been consistently in District One.
That being said, I, I would just like to go on the record to say, I'm very familiar with the location, I was brought up in that area, and I have to say that, unfortunately, I guess, times change, things are different. change, things are different, that, that location is totally different. I used to hunt across the street where the outlet is now. That was a farm, and I'd go in there pheasant hunting, rabbit hunting, and I, I, I'm sympathetic to Mr. Borges, but I don't think this is a, a problem that the town should worry about. I mean, I don't, I've been around for a long time, probably 100 years, and I know if I was in South Dartmouth, where the fire station is, if there was a problem there, I would tell you, I would bet my life that those people in South Dartmouth would be here complaining to the town of Dartmouth, saying, "The ambulance has created a problem." Since I've been around, STAT Ambulance has been around for a while, they've never created a problem. And as I said, I'm sympathetic with Mr. Borges, but if I was gonna have a neighbor in that area, I think I'd like the ambulance to be there. They're not gonna cause a problem, they're not gonna be a detriment to the area, and unfortunately, we need the ambulance service. And that whole area's changed, so, and I believe, I may be wrong, but I think Dartmouth Street's the second busiest street in the Commonwealth, in, in the town of Dartmouth, but for Fons Connor Road. So the, the ambulance is not gonna add any traffic, they're not gonna disrupt anybody's welfare in that, in that area, and I think it's, it's probably strategically, it's the best area for everybody in the town. There are certain areas that you say, "Where are you gonna put it?" I think, Mr. Chair, you said that you don't want to put it in Smithneck Road somewhere, and somebody in Bliss Connor has a problem, and they're complaining it took an hour to get there, a half hour to get there, whatever. But, uh, I, I think it's a, I think the board should support this. It's a, it's a good plan, and I'm not really, I'm not really crazy about the design of the, the building, but that's not, I don't think that's within our purview. It would look better if it was a Nantucket Cottage Garage, but I don't think we're here telling, telling that we want Cedar Shingles and everything, but as I said, I've been around for a long time, STAT Ambulance has never had a problem that I, that I'm aware of.
Thank you. All right. Anything that you'd like to add, Attorney Hume?
No.
All right, so I have not prepared any type of findings on this, because when I first read this, I didn't have all the facts, and I don't, I don't know how well I was, I was leaning in either direction. So obviously, it's always good, and I think counsel made a very good presentation on behalf of the client in explaining why it is that we're here. So given these circumstances, I would call upon you to prepare a decision we could put on for the next date. You prepare a proposed findings for a decision and the statutory, meeting the statutory requirements. I'll take a look at those, and then obviously, we'll look at them, and then we can make whatever adjustments.
Okay.
I, not gonna, we're obviously not gonna vote on it today, but certainly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Doctor?
Yeah. Just for my information, does Department of Transportation has any?
No.
Saying about this one, does it have to go to through the department?
No, but I just heard from the engineer here, who I place a lot of reliance on. What do you say about that?
Uh, Dartmouth Street is not a state highway, so MassDOT has no jurisdiction over.
Thank you.
Sounds like it makes sense to me. Okay, so when's our next hearing date?
November 6th.
Are you available on November 6th?
I will be.
Okay. So if you need some sort of template as to how it's done, you can speak to Michelle, Michelle will send you over a template of how we handle variances, you can take a look at it.
Thank you.
But I just want to make sure that I hadn't misspoke about anything earlier. See, Mr. Borges wants to say something. You, you wanna add something else, Mr. Borges? I'll give you this last.
Go there.
No, 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 unless you want to see something, something you want to see here?
I'll show you something on that, plan here.
All right, I'll let you come over, take a look at the plan. I'm giving you a lot of latitude here, Mr. Borges.
Can I, can I, just, I just spoke with my client, one of the issues is the agreement, the agreements that are contingent upon this. One is the current owner has a purchase and sale for another property. The extended period of time of November 5th could be a potential problem for them keeping that contingency in a place to move, which would then result in this becoming moot. And we're hoping that if there's a way to.
Do we have one on the 25th of October?
No, it's 23rd.
23rd?
We have one?
How many minutes?
We only have one at the schedule.
On 25th? It's a regular scheduled meeting day?
Yeah.
Sure, we'll put it on. But let me, let me just say this, Attorney Markie.
Yeah, why not? I mean, it's gonna be fast.
16? Mr. Markie, we actually have a available date of October 23rd. We don't have, we don't have anything on, but we are willing to put that on. Now, the thing is this, you know, I, I don't, not unsymp, I'm not unsympathetic to people's situations, but, you know, those time constraints, they can't be posed on us.
I, I understand, that's why, I, I understand that, but we're asking for, we tried to get, I think, we got the notice on September 3rd, we got it in here now, and we appreciate the staff for getting that done, but we also want to try to, but the earliest possible date is the 23rd, we will.
October 23rd is the earliest possible date. What do we have?
We have nothing scheduled, the rest of the month. If you want to go here, you could go here, just in this case. We can't put anything else on.
There's still a 20-day appeal period, that's gonna go beyond that timeframe. So gentlemen, we could put it on. Let me just see what I got. So you're saying October 16th?
You could.
Are you available, Mr. Hume, for October 16th, which is a week from today?
I believe so, yeah.
And that would, then the next one after that would only be in November?
November 6th, yeah.
How many we got on for November?
23.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Halim?
16th.
The 16th?
Sure.
This is backup, Attorney Fariah. Would you be available?
Yes.
On the 16th, which is a week from today? Or Doctor?
Okay, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the consideration, greatly appreciate it.
All right, so, I'll entertain a motion that we continue the matter to October 16th, on the condition that you're gonna provide us, you know, within.
You're gonna have it within 48 hours.
Okay. Having put that, I think Mr. Borges wanted to look at one more thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
About this property, you told me that this is gonna.
I'm gonna change it around so you can get a better glimpse. That's Dartmouth Street, that's Atlantic Street.
Dartmouth Street, okay.
Yep.
This house is, uh, in Dartmouth Street, right?
Yeah.
Where is Tremont Street?
Tremont, Tremont Street's not here, but Tremont Street would be somewhere over here, your house would be on this.
Okay, this house is, this is on 718 Dartmouth Street.
That's correct.
He has a driveway right against my, my property. His driveway is so kind of narrow, that's very close, and also a garage there.
I can't speak to that, because that's something that's been in existence.
From my understanding, he's buying this property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's another one to be concerned about.
How do you mean?
They turned this into commercial property.
You can have a commercial type use, or business type use, in this zoning district. In this zoning district, you can have a commercial type or business type use. It's, it's.
As of right.
As of right.
Not this.
Not asking, you can do it. So if somebody wanted to buy your house, and they wanted to convert it to a certain type of business, that's allowed within that district, they could do so. All right, I've given you a lot of, a lot of latitude here, Mr. Borges, just to make sure that we addressed all your concerns. At this point in time, we're gonna put this on for next week, okay?
So there's gonna be another hearing on this?
There'll be another hearing next week, yes, sir.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
So tell him.
Next Wednesday.
No.
You're notified, everyone's notified, the people at home, you're being notified right now that the hearing is on for next Wednesday, okay?
Same time?
Same time, 6:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we continue use variance ZAV 24-14 to October 16th.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Moving along, the next matter that we have is special permit ZSP 24-9. This is for subject properties at 291 Flaxmore Road. This has already been continued a couple of times, gentlemen. I've got a letter here. It says, "Attached please find, excuse me, attached, please find the signed continuance documents." I'm sorry, but I got caught off guard, as I thought the next hearing was going to be a month from the September 25th. Thank you very much for keeping my feet to the ground, quite busy on my end, please let me know if you need additional information. So I guess what they're doing is they're asking for a continuance. Would we put it on for the November, which date?
6th?
6th date. So they've already signed the, the extension, so we don't have to worry about any automatic, automatic allowance of the requested relief because of the fact that it wasn't done within the statutory timeframe. So I'll entertain a motion that we could put this on for November 6th, and more specifically, the case number on this is CSP 24-9.
I make a motion that, at the request of the petitioner, that we continue special permit ZSP 24-9 to, what date?
November 6th.
November 6, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So we've moved that along. Now, the next portion of tonight's meeting is the administrative portion. The first matter that we have on is review and approval of administrative minutes of September 11, 2024.
I have no comments, Mr. Chair.
I have no comments.
I have no comments either. Gentlemen?
No comments.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the administrative minutes of September 11, 2024.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next is review and approval of special permit ZSP 24-7 regarding 1402 Tucker Road.
I have nothing, I have nothing to add.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of special permit ZSP-24-7 for 1402 Tucker Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next is review and approval of special permit, oh, excuse me, review and approval of variance ZAV 24-10 411 Fons Connor Road.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I have nothing to add.
Neither do I. Anything, gentlemen?
Nothing.
I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for use variance ZAV-24-10 for, for 411 Fons Connor Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Review and approval of special permit ZSP 24-13 for 411 Fons Connor Road.
Don't we did that, right? We just did that?
Did variance.
We did a variance.
This is a special permit, I, yeah.
I have nothing to add.
All right.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the special permit ZSP-24-13 for 411 Fons Connor Road, as written.
Aye. Michael?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Doctor?
Just a question, my memory tells me that, did you sit down, were you on the, over there when they were talking about Tucker Road, or did you come down, sit down beside me?
With Tucker Road?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I actually, I did step down on that. I, I recused myself on that.
You recused yourself?
I did.
I know, so, the, the memory is correct, so are you voting on that one?
I'm only approving the minutes that they're drafted correctly.
It's okay to do it?
That's all, I was present to listen to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next is review and approval of variance ZAV 24-11 5 Mary Ann Way.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I have nothing.
Make a motion that we approve variance ZAV 24-11 for 5 Mary Ann Way.
The minutes thereof. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Review and approval of special permit ZSP 24-10 47 Spring Street.
I have nothing to add.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the special permit minutes for ZSP-24-10 for 47 Spring Street, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Last but not least is review and approval of ZAV 24-5 10 Bridge Street.
I have nothing, Mr. Chair.
I have nothing to add.
Neither do I. All in favor?
I make a motion that.
Sorry.
We approve the minutes of variance ZAV 24-5 for 10 Bridge Street.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, so we have some other business. We have 155 Old River Road letter discussion. I did receive that. So gentlemen, as you are aware, we had requested, and we had, I had written a letter on behalf of our board, that we have counsel appointed to us to assist us in guiding us to determine whether or not we need to open the public hearing, whether or not, what type of announcements or notices would need to be provided to the public at large, before we were to consider the instructions that were sort of placed upon us by the court with regard to our decision on the Fons Connor Road with the, the marijuana variance that we granted there for the marijuana grow facility. So unfortunately, and I'll read the letter into the, into the record, it says, "Dear Mr. Maderis, I'm writing this letter in response to your August 30, 2024 request for independent counsel regarding the Superior Court's recent decision on the 155 Old River Road zoning variance. The Superior Court is requesting that the zoning board of appeals review its decision to grant the zoning variance and submit its justification. The select board met on September 9, 2024 to review your request. The board understands that town council is not representing the ZBA in this matter. However, legal services are not required for ZBA to review this decision and summarize its findings for the Superior Court. Even on matters where town council represents your board, he takes a passive approach to the litigation, that is, he does not actively participate in the litigation. Rather, he lets the party who receives the approval defend the approval. Therefore, the select board voted to deny the request. If you have any additional questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact me directly." And it's signed by Chris Mattel, co-interim town administrator, Town of Dartmouth." So, interesting. So now, we are left with the onus of making the decisions as to how we're gonna handle this moving forward without the assistance of counsel. So having said that, we are here at this point to discuss, and I see who's present here in the audience is the actual petitioner, who we granted the variance to. Obviously, at this point, I'm sure she wants to see what we're going to do, so that she would know how to proceed moving forward. At the very least, I think what we need to do is, we need to announce a public hearing, right? I don't know if we need to, we should at least put it on the agenda, that we're gonna review this.
Agreement, it's back for.
It's a remand, but to provide more specificity as to one specific issue. I don't have, I don't have the documents in front of me right now at this moment.
So we need to rewrite the decision, basically?
Well, I think we need to, we need to amend a segment of the provision, of the decision.
To provide more.
Specificity.
Okay.
No, but the thing that bothers me is that the judge used the language, back to the zoning board for further hearing, not to review its decision, or review the facts previously found, but for further hearing. I'm not sure what that means.
I'm not sure exactly, but if you take the, if you just.
The other thing that bothers him is that memo, that letter you got, that's absolutely wrong. Well, the, the guy who's the administrator for the town says that the town sued us. It wasn't some third party trying to support a, a claim or going after the town on a zoning issue. It's the town board suing us. So how can he say that town council had nothing to do with it? wasn't some third party trying to support a claim or going after the town on a zoning issue. It's the town board suing us. So how can he say that Town Counsel had nothing to do with it?
Well, I think what he's saying is that they take a passive approach to this. I don't understand how that's.
No, that's not, that's not correct. It would be a passive approach if somebody else brought their claim against her. Then it would be a passive approach. We would have to be named.
That's right.
That's not what happened here. That town is the actual plaintiff in this case.
There's a great distinction.
He has it all wrong. Now, the other option I was just thinking here is, should we, should we put together a bunch, you had questions. Do we have to have a hearing? Do we have, can we just review all the material that's previously been presented to us? Can we do that by listening to the tapes? Can we, you know, all, should, that should be shot out to Town Counsel and say, "Give us an answer to these questions."
But Town Counsel actually represents the plaintiff in this case.
Well, let's see how he approaches that. And I would attach a copy of that letter to our question.
Well, if that's what you propose to do, then I ask that you put together the questions, we'll review them, and then we could submit them to Town Counsel.
All right.
And see what his approach is going to be at that point in time. But every time we engage Town Counsel, it's going to, has to go through the town administrator. So I don't know whether or not we're going to have any type of blockade there.
Regardless whether we have a new hearing, or we watch the tape, or we, whatever we need to do, we need to elaborate on certain things in the decision. And I think we can do that between, I mean, we have three bright lawyers on this board.
We have to do that in a public setting. I would think it has to be done in a public setting. It's not like we could just sit at that table off the record and put that together.
Whatever, yeah.
So it has to be, I would think it'd have to be in a public setting. That's another question that we would have.
Yep.
Well, it does say, it does say a hearing. So if we take the literal interpretation of what a hearing is, then there has to be a moment in which people can come forward and.
You don't want to start the process all over, but I mean, this is.
No, no, no.
No, we don't have to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, can I, I'm a little bit confused, as always, but I got a couple of questions I want to ask. Who's the plaintiff in this case?
The plaintiff?
Yeah, who's the plaintiff? Who brought a suit against the Board of Appeals?
I believe it was the Select Board and the Building Department.
And the Planning.
And the, sorry, and the Planning Board.
Okay, and? So the plaintiffs are represented by Town Counsel.
That's correct.
That's correct.
And if it's, if my memory, you know, I told you I'm 100 years old, my memory is not too good, but I remember somewhere down during this process that Town Counsel made a statement that he could represent both people. And I think we got to check that because I don't know how he could represent the plaintiff and represent us. But what really bothers me is there precedent in this town, when I was a selectman, and I don't know if you could get anybody to volunteer and serve on boards that would get sued and, as an official act for the Town of Dartmouth, and have Town Counsel or the administrator or whomever say, "You're not entitled to get representation." That's absolutely crazy because nobody would serve on a board. We are defendants in a Superior Court case because we did what we thought was right as a board. And we got Town Counsel representing the town, and we got nobody representing us when we're right. We took a position that we think we're right. And we're out there in left field having people throwing balls at us, hitting us on the head, and we get some administrator says, "You're not entitled to representation." That's absolutely false. And I think what we got to do is get some type of counsel here, and the town's going to pay for it. They have to pay for it. They have to reimburse this board. There's precedent that says that if we hire a lawyer, that, and we litigate this matter, that the Town of Dartmouth has to indemnify this board for the legal expenses. Otherwise, you wouldn't get anybody to sit on boards. And it's, it's absolutely crazy.
Well, I share your sentiment, Attorney Fariah. Really, I feel like we've been, we've been hung out to dry a little bit here when we need assistance to ensure that we do this correctly. And yet.
Problem, where do we get, I think we did everything correctly. This board, I don't see anything we did wrong. But now, we're involved as a defendant in litigation by the very town that appointed us and gave us the authority to act as Board of Appeals members, right? And now when we say to them, "We need some guidance," we're defendants because you brought, you brought, you appointed us, and now you're suing us, basically, right? So we want, we want counsel because I read the judge's decision. I don't know what she's looking for. I don't think she knows what she's looking for. She's just saying, all of these variance cases, and this is in all deference to the judge, almost every variance that I've ever seen could be challenged in the Superior Court successfully because we have to make findings that are very unusual, right? We have to find unique circumstances, but topography, right? If everybody went to Superior Court, we'd lose 100% of the cases. It happens, you know? People don't do it because they can't afford to appeal it. But for us to find the variance, in our position here, we're trying to help people that need, that need assistance. And we have, every finding we have, I kind of, I look at it and say, it's not, this is in all deference to the board to say, we have to, we have to put language in there to say, "Oh, yeah, you know what? This is why we gave the variance." But we're really given the variance because of our own experiences, our own common sense saying that this is a case that cries out for help for a variance.
Well, not only that, of the variances that we have granted, this is one that they certainly, I think, have met the burden best, probably one of the better ones that have met the burden with regards to soils that actually existed on the property and things like that.
This is a case that should be sustained.
And there was true hardship with this property, given its character and its nature. I understand.
100%.
And to the extent that we're left out here without the assistance of counsel, it's certainly been disheartening to me as a member of this board that we're not, that we're not being provided a basic, a basic service as a result of, you know, what's transpired with this case. And we're dealing with something that's serious. It's a judge requesting that we do this. I'm sure that when we get to the nuts and bolts of it, we'll be fine. But how do we actually get to the point where we can consider this as a board? Do we have to have full notice and publication, just like we started the case? Or when they started the case, when I say we, when the petitioner started the case, do we have to publish it again? Or can we, can we subvert that and not have to publish it? Do we just have to announce it and make it a matter on a next public hearing? I'm inclined, just to put it on for one of the dates coming up, that it'll be on the agenda, and we're going to just discuss it as a board, specifically try to dissect what the judge has requested, and review openly what it was that we had. We could try, we can get the, if there's a, is it a transcript of this? There is no, there's no transcript of the actual hearing. But we'd like to see what was said, or maybe do we have to call the petitioner and ask the petitioner to provide us the information that we need with regard to this request. Those are all things that, you know, would require some answers for us to.
Well, my, my other question would be is, does the board think it would be advisable to ask the Select Board and the Planning Board to have a conference here? Most cases are settled, if they can be settled. Are we wasting our time? Is there any common ground that we can go back to these boards and say, "Can we settle this case?" Is there anything you are looking for, or is it thumbs up and thumbs down?
Well, I think it's an all or nothing situation. I don't think that they want that type of use on that particular type of property. You have to remember, this is a parcel of property that the town paid almost $800,000 for and then sold it for $80,000. So this is something that's been very, very difficult for them, right? It's been very, that's at the.
You know why? They sold it for that price because they didn't get anybody to bid, because everybody, everybody in, I know, everybody in America was smarter than the Town of Dartmouth. And everybody that was out there bidding, you and I could have been out there bidding, and they said, "You know what? We're not going to bid anymore because the property, the people that were out there bidding on that knew that that, the soil conditions, that farm had a history of not being a successful farm." And there were people in the town, there were farmers, that will tell you that, because I've talked to them. They knew that property was problematic. So the Town of Dartmouth, whatever they paid for, they got fleeced. So now they're mad. They're mad because somebody else might make it work with marijuana, which they already approved with this plan they have, you know? Marijuana is legal, I guess. I don't know. I don't, I don't do marijuana, but all of a sudden, we give somebody a variance to grow marijuana, and the town is, the town is suing us. Doesn't make any sense. But I, my suggestion would be, write a letter, see if they'll, before we have the public meeting, is there any way we can sit down and compromise with these people? And if not, then we got to, I think we got to have a public hearing. And the judge, from what I can understand, wants us to make findings of fact, which, which are more detailed than what we put in the decision. That's what I think.
So if I, so if I understand you correctly, you're thinking that we should put this on for, on the agenda as a public, as a, as a discussion, public discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Does it have to be public discussion, or it could be just a discussion like today?
She says a hearing, right? The judge says hearing. And hearing, in my opinion, usually has notice requirements, so all affected parties have an opportunity to be heard. She didn't say meeting. She didn't say further evaluation. She said further, did she say further hearing or just hearing?
Further hearing.
Further hearing.
But I think she wants findings of fact, more detailed finding of fact, I think. I don't know. I've never seen a situation like this and.
I don't have it in front of me. Can I just take another look at it?
I mean, with Superior Court, I've only been twice.
Mr. Chair? So it says, "For the, for the reasons set forth in this order, the Court remains the matter to the Town of Dartmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for further hearing." So, further hearing means we take in further testimony. That's how, that's how I interpret that.
Well, that's what I, that's the issue, right? That's the big issue. What is further hearing?
So you and I are both lawyers. In order for there to be, in order for there to be a hearing, you typically have notice to all parties that could be impacted by the outcome of that hearing. And to me, that's anyone in the Town of Dartmouth. So it would require publication and a hearing. But it would be limited to the issue of what the judge wants us to address. It'd be limited to that.
Well, that's, that's a different, that's a different situation because if the judge and the Superior Court orders the, orders this board for further hearing, does that mean we have to advertise it as a new hearing? It didn't say a new hearing. It says further hearing. So do we have to go through the same process and do it all over again? I don't know. If we had counsel, maybe somebody could file a motion and ask for instructions from the judge. But we don't have counsel because we, we don't have the rights. We.
That's a very good point, Attorney Fariah. Because we could, we could actually, if we had counsel, we could write back to the judge and ask for some specifics.
We need instructions from the judge, further instructions. We don't know anything. And then I guess, you know, if we, if we don't advertise it, and we don't have other people come in here, the Town of Dartmouth's got counsel, they're going to probably appeal anything we do. And then we're back in the same boat. So I think we need, we need to find, we need to file a motion for instructions from the judge saying, "What exactly do we do? Do we have a new hearing? We took a lot of testimony. We heard a lot of, I don't, I don't think a new hearing is going to, at least in my opinion, is going to change the facts of this case." But.
Just, just a question, if I may ask.
Yes, Doctor. Yes, Doctor.
Do we have any, the Town of Dartmouth has any sort of bylaws if there's differences between different departments, how to solve it? Or they don't have, if they don't have any bylaws to what to do in case of there is any discomfort between the two boards and how to be resolved? Why should they go to, why should they go to the court to begin with?
I'm not sure if that exists, Doctor. I didn't understand exactly everything that you said. Can you explain, explain to me, Walter, what you may have said?
No, you think he's saying, "Why should you go to the court? Isn't there any procedure within the boards?" I don't think there is any, but there's precedent that says.
I don't see if there's a way to mediate this. Either the town sued us, the three agencies of the town sued us because we granted a variance that they feel was, was not founded as a matter of law. It doesn't meet the legal requirements. So they sued us for that. And the petitioner, they want to move forward because they want their variance. They want to be able to conduct the operation there. The town doesn't want it. The three agencies of the town don't want that to exist there. I don't see as the ability to compromise it. I see it as an all or nothing. I could be wrong.
No, you could, you could be right. Either thumbs up or thumbs down. But my, my problem here is that if every time we granted a variance and the Planning Board was against it, if they, if one board sues another board, and one board all of a sudden gets Town Counsel, why are we out in left field without a lawyer?
No, you're right.
You know? Why should they be able to sue us? You can't get people to sit on these boards. And every time you, if, you know what? I'm going to run for Planning Board, and I'm going to sue you guys every time you make a variance. And I'm going to win 99% of them. And I'll guarantee you that. I'll guarantee you that. And you know what? You guys will be there twirling your thumbs with no lawyer, and I'll have Town Counsel, and he'll be making $400,000 a year because every time he goes to court. What are, what are we doing as a town? What are we doing as a government? It doesn't make any sense. And you know what? We're here volunteering, and we're listening to people that have problems, and we solve them. And 99% of the people are happy with the way, not everybody, but that's the job. We can't give a variance to everybody. We listen, we have public hearings, just like this gentleman that came up. I feel sorry for Mr. Borges. I know that property, you know? But some things happen in your, in your neighborhood. That's why we have a board. We've got to make a decision. What are we going to get, sued? Tomorrow, we're going to get sued because we got an ambulance there. Why not? I'll sue. I'll sue the board. See if you can win it, you know? It's just crazy.
So let me just read these three provisions, and this is basically the crux of what the judge is looking for. "In its decision, the board gives, in the decision, the board gives, makes no generalized," this is exactly what it says, "The board gives, makes no generalized findings related to the soil, and fails to address the topography or shape of the parcel as it may relate to the grant of the variance. With only brief mention of the soil conditions, in its one paragraph statement, the board concludes that the conditions of the soil that affect, affect the subject property that do not generally affect the zoning district in which the structure is located. The decision does not address the APR and how it was considered, if at all, by the board in its decision. These conclusory statements are insufficient for the court to make findings and/or evaluate the board's decision." That's one. Number two, "The board's conclusion that the defendant Arseneo would incur substantial hardship clearly adopts only the averments of Ms. Arseneo before the board, but does not address with any meaningful, meaningful analysis whether there were other agricultural uses of the property, for the property." I don't remember what was said. So obviously, I don't know, I don't know how we're going to review this. We probably have to read their recordings of this.
Video recording. We have a recording.
And this, this goes on for numerous days. There are numerous meetings in which this occurs. Finally, "The decision is wholly lacking in any cogent discussion of how, if at all, the grant of the variance would not be a detriment to the public good and substantially derogate from the purpose of the bylaw. There is no discussion of the purpose of the marijuana overlay district, or attempts to expand that area, or votes of the citizenry of the town allowing or denying expansion of the overlay district." This stuff doesn't exist. "The board's mere conclusory statements and use of the operative language by the board is insufficient for this court to review the decision." Well, I don't think we're going to be able to provide anything with regard to that one. "As written, the board's decision is lacking, as set forth in this order, and as a result, the court is unable to assess whether the board, in exercising its discretion in granting the variance, acted on legally, legally untenable grounds, or is based on a unreasonable, whimsical, capricious, or arbitrary exercise of its judgment in apply, it says, "in apply land use regulations." I think it should say, "in applying last land, land use regulations." And it refers to a case. And then it goes on to say, "For the reasons set forth in this order, the Court remains the matter to the Town of Dartmouth Zoning Board of Appeals for further hearing." To me, you know, when I, when you read this as a whole, it starts to sound to me like we got to really go back. It's more than just a meeting. But if you guys are fine, if you want to just put it on for a meeting date, we can pick sometime, sometime in mid-November or December, whenever it is, that we will have a meeting solely on this issue, we'll dissect from this decision what we believe the judge is asking us for, we'll review the decision that we provided, we'll supplement it, and submit it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
I think if we go back.
The other thing we could do is this. The petitioner was represented by counsel. He can review this. He can make suggestions as to what was discussed and what additionally would need to be added.
Ask her. I don't think she's represented by counsel anymore.
Well, she was at the time.
I know.
Right? She may not be now, but she was at the time.
Right.
So that's something that we could ask, that they come forth with counsel, have counsel review this, and put it, put something together that would provide us some guidance that they feel would meet the requirements. Because they have the burden of proving this. It's not us.
That's right.
Right? So that's the other thing is, is we serve here in a quasi-dedicial position. They're asking the board to do it. Well, we can open the hearing, call upon the petitioner to provide us additional documentation, evidence, testimonial evidence, to support the additional findings that the court wants. And then we can incorporate those in our decision. It's not like we have to independently go out and do this. It's not like we have to independently go out and do this. I don't believe we do.
Mr. Chair, I think, I may be wrong though, but if... I don't know what we have. We don't have written transcripts, but my recollection of this case was that we took a lot of evidence in this case about soil condition, more than any other case that I've seen. We have testimony from farmers and everything. I mean, if we have to do that, and I know the burden of proof isn't on us, but we're the board that makes the decision. If we could get a transcript or review the videotape and incorporate everything that we had in more detail and submit it to the judge saying, "Look, here's the soil condition."
I agree. I think we have the information we're looking for. There was a report by a soil engineer that was submitted concerning the specific...
And we could refer to that to tighten it up.
And I'm sure that report's probably five, 10 pages. We can take whatever language we feel appropriate and add it, and we can come up with the decision that it's five. I think, you know, they want more detail on how we came up with the decision.
But let me ask you something. But why should... Hold on. But why should the burden be put on us? The petitioner has to prove to us...
Because we're in court right now.
Well, we are, but the petitioner has to prove to us, has to prove to us that they've met that burden.
Mr. Chair, we already made that determination, though. We agree with the evidence that was submitted here. So, now that the judge has said we want a further hearing, whatever, and I agree with you saying the burden isn't on us, but in most cases, and I've seen this board, what you've done and the board's done is say to the attorney, "Put together something for us and submit it to us so we can review it." Of course, that's the best way to do it because it takes the burden off of us to do, you know, every decision. You just did it with Attorney Martin.
And this decision was one of those. This was one of those. Attorney Richard Manning put the decision together. We reviewed it. We made changes to it in order to, that we felt would meet. No different. This is no different than when you go to court, you put together a proposed order for a judge to sign off on.
Right.
There's no difference with that. The judge can either sign it the way it is, change it, or deny it. And what do we do? We reviewed it. It was, it's like no different from a proposed order. And we submitted it. Now, if it's insufficient, it may be insufficient because of the fact that it was presented to us that way, but we also felt that it met the requirements. Obviously, the judge doesn't feel that way.
As far as the APR, I think there was lengthy back and forth going with all...
There was. It was three meetings.
Right. And the thing was, is marijuana was considered an agriculture item. And this is what was based, our reasoning was based on that. Because like I said, it wasn't...
That's what the judge said. But isn't marijuana a plant? I don't know. I don't know where the judge is coming from. We didn't present any evidence of what the agricultural thing was going to be. We haven't. She's not going to be building widgets out there. She's going to be growing a plant, you know?
I mean...
I think we ought to put it down for a hearing and see what we can do as far as getting, I guess, hone in on the decision we made and see if we can appease the judge.
Remand. I've heard that term before so many times with the remand.
Remand is for...
Send it back. Send it back to the zoning board. But send it back in what form? That's what I'm saying. Do we advertise for the hearing again? Or this is the question?
That's the issue.
I know, I know. But I'm saying, why don't we find out? I mean, I don't know. You guys have...
But how do you suggest that we find out?
I mean, I don't know.
I don't represent this board. I can't represent this board. I'm only one person.
I know, but I mean, I have some other lawyers that, well, before, I mean, I don't know. I can reach out and see what's the procedure or something.
There's a couple of things we can do. Number one, as I said, we could, on our own, file a motion for instructions from the judge and say, "We want clarification of this decision and give us some guidance here." And then, if she comes back and clarifies it, we have a public hearing and...
Now, the problem is, if you file a motion, who's going to go here? Who's going to go argue the motion in front of the judge? I can't represent this board.
No, we can't represent this board.
I'm a member of this board.
No, no, we can't.
Right. I agree with you, Walter, but the problem is that they're cutting us off at the knees.
Well, I guess then the other...
When I say "they," it's the Select Board.
The other decision is have the board make a decision, a decision to hire a lawyer.
All right.
And ask for the town to indemnify us and see what they do because I think they have to. I think there's precedent in this town that says if this board hires a lawyer and we're litigating, it makes no sense at all for us not to be represented if we're getting sued in an official act. We're not getting sued because we're out, you know, drinking, driving and drinking down on Elm Street, right? We're here making an official act, and we're getting sued.
I hear you. All right, John, so how are we going to leave this at this point? I'd like to have some movement. Because quite frankly, this is going to be a significant amount of work. This is a significant amount of work that, to review these, to review those tapes, it would take days to review those tapes.
Why don't you, Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be is the next meeting, why don't you put this on the agenda for next meeting and each board member give it some thought and come up with a plan?
All right. That's a plan. We'll put it on as additional business at the end and see if, for the next hearing day.
Next one, we only have one case, yeah. I mean, that's next week, right?
That's next week.
Oh, you want...
November 5th.
It'll be November 6th.
November 6th.[1639.52]